Meeting of the zoning board of appeals, uh, December nineteenth, seven twenty-three. In the meeting, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is stands one nation, united, universal, the representative of us as well.
Have a moment of silence, uh. Armed forces. Thank you. Okay, um, just to review quickly, the Zoom meeting procedure and procedure in general, um, will be, uh. Public hearings are open when an applicant comes and asks for a variance. They're able to present their reason for that variance to the board. The board can ask questions of them and they can, um, supply additional information as requested. Once they feel they've, uh, presented all the information that's necessary, uh, we can ask for any questions or information from the, uh. Uh, audience, the audience directs any questions towards the board, uh, and not the applicant. Uh, we also ask for any questions or from the, uh, Zoom, the off-site, uh, attendees. And once all those have been covered, we'll ask the applicant if they are satisfied that all the information, uh, has been presented, it needs to be. If they're agreeable and the board is agreeable, we can close the public hearing. We have sixty-two days to make a decision from the time we close the public hearing. Uh, we generally try to make this thing's decision on the night of the presentation, but we do have sixty-two days. Okay, that's, we'll move on. We have two public, continued public hearings tonight. The first one is Logan Rockcastle, uh, representing Linda Evans, uh, for property on five-two-nine-oh Kepner Road, uh, candidate.
Yeah, I'm Logan Rockcastle with Mark's Engineering, um, believe you were chatting about my project prior to this meeting.
We're chatting generally about the whole pro, uh, form-based.
Right, yeah. Um, so I'm not sure if you're planning on continuing this to gain more information like you did last time, or you're, uh. Seeking to make a vote on, uh, on the variances. Um, I'm happy to go through the project again, but I know, um, my colleague, uh, Jonathan Jones was here last meeting to discuss what was this project is, um, we are asking for a few, uh, multitude of variances that are that seem somewhat significant when it's compared to the form-based code. But as you know, we're dealing with existing conditions and we're trying to make the best case scenario to allow my client to expand their business without a huge financial cost. Um, that's why we've come up with a scenario where the future development, um, allows us to design with the form-based code in mind. And that's, I think Chris was pointing on that, it's the overall concept of what we're proposing that kind of helps us play into the form-based code and allows us to, um, build this, uh, maintenance garage for the, um, the current dealership. Um, as you know, a lot of it's based on setback, but we're keeping the setback of the existing building. And the form-based code is a little bit more strict than just the traditional town code, so it has to do with parking lot widths, uh, setbacks from the front, form-based code wants it right up front on the road. And because we have an existing structure, we want to attach it to the the new proposed, uh, building, we want to attach it to the existing structure, so it's one solid building and it's ease of use, they don't have to go outside to a whole nother building. Uh, they want to have everything in-house and so that's, that's our angle on this whole project is to play with, uh, existing conditions. But when we do future development, we want to make sure that we're, uh, to the standard of the form-based code. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have in regards to the proposed plan, if I can ease your mind in any way.
What's the size of the existing?
I don't have it on like plans exactly, um. Forty-eight by twenty-two, so it's.
Good enough.
Yeah.
Then when we're seeing the width of the parking lot here, which way is width and which way is depth?
Uh, well, width throughout is, uh, weight's fronting on the road, so the longest part of the lot is the width.
Okay.
Not to put you on the spot, if you have an answer, or I guess you want to answer, do John actually give a pretty good answer last month?
Hmm.
So, could you design this lot to more in keeping with the form-based code? What would it look like and why not?
Well, we've tried to create scenarios where we could comply with the form-based code, but all those scenarios detaches it from the existing building. Um, and the whole idea is to keep it within, attached to the building. That's, that's basically, uh, the front setback would have to be five, between five and twenty feet. And that puts it right up on the road, I mean, twenty feet, um, it's basically the, the back end of where that parking spot is.
What, what is the setback up on three-thirty-two if you, for the form-based?
Uh, minimum five, maximum twenty.
Oh, is there any possibility of moving the building to the west side of the build?
Uh, and again, it's right up, you're saying come out the other side?
Yeah.
That's like the main entrance that would take a full remodel of the building to make that happen. Where this is being proposed is the back end, there's already an existing garage on this building. We're just expanding it, uh, so there's.
No, I understand, I'm just wondering, is there room to add this eighty-foot structure to get you to the form-based code on the other side of the building? I'm not saying it's not going to involve some modeling, but.
Instead of east-south, is that what you're saying, David? No, it would still not comply because it, the, the primary road would be Kepner Road. So it has to, that's what the.
Mike, can you just look at the plan that way?
Not if you can come between five and twenty feet and three-thirty-two.
Yeah.
But we would still, we wouldn't meet the setback of the side setback, all front, rear, side setback. It's minimum five, maximum twenty, you know, all those, we would still not comply.
To whichever right away.
To whichever right away we put it on.
Also puts it on to the corner lot, which right has.
We wanted to keep main track, traffic on Kepner Road. So you're not pulling out onto three-thirty-two.
You're not pulling on three-thirty-two right now?
No, but if we were trying to use the front lot, you're getting closer to three-thirty-two. And that we're using the existing entrance as it is.
Lot one and lot three are separate lots now?
I, I'm not sure, I don't think, not exactly sure if the subdivision is contingent on the variances, I'm not sure.
It would be.
Yeah.
And I understand, I think the town checked today, I think there's unpaid subdivision and variance fees on the club.
I was not aware of that, but I'll, but I can't know that.
I don't think the subdivision, without the fees.
Right, yeah, you're correct.
So it is not a subdivision today, it's all one.
It's all one lot, but if we get these variances, the idea is to go to planning board and get, uh, subdivision approval and site plan approval, so we can put the overall plan into place.
Why is the subdivision, uh, caveat it on whether or not they're variance?
Well, it's, it's hard to, to, yeah, because we have to go back to the drawing board and see what they want to do with the parcel.
Okay.
This is where I was asking before Chris about, I mean, it's not on the map, which were, or the site plan, which were referring to now, but could we put a condition in that lots one and lot three need to be, if we accept lot two variances, can we put the condition in the lot one and lot three to be, um, you know, conform to the, um, code?
Flat out, so I think I would be more comfortable with saying, they have, Mike, can you put the other, the full build-out plan up for all three lots? So, yeah, so as of right now, the way we design the future development, it complies with the form-based code.
We could condition on the full, on the current plan.
Yeah, that'll look exactly like that and be in compliance. I mean, if you make that condition without a specific plan.
Right.
You know, they have the same right to come back and ask for variance from this very board.
I, I forgot we had.
That makes sense.
Do you want to take each variance in turn for maybe like a little justification why it can't be?
So the first one is the off-street parking, uh, in front of the building. They want to see the parking in the back, in the rear, as you, we've kind of shown, um, well, rear, rear and side, you're allowed rear and side. So that's what we propose for the future buildings. We can't comply with that right now because the existing parking is in front of the building. Uh, the second one is, uh, parking lot exceeds thirty percent of lot width. Um, as you can see, parking lot takes up basically the whole lot, so that's where we need a variance for that. Um, building facade less than seventy-five percent transparency. Um, the existing building does not comply with that, and the future one, uh, the garage doors, I mean, there's potential to do full glass doors, but even then, I don't think it would comply.
Why not?
Well, it's because the, the whole facade is not glass, there's separation between each bay that would make it so the calculation is over seventy-five or less than seven, seventy-five percent when you look, when you have the whole building and the garage in place.
You make garage doors out of a plastic, but anyway, some sort of material.
Like a transparent.
Yeah. Darken, so you wouldn't just be looking right through it.
Well, I, I know, based on the conversations I've had with my client, uh, it's, it comes down to an expense, uh, thing as well. The full transparency glass doors or whatever plastic, um, it's, it costs a lot more than having, uh, a, a few windows on the doors, or on the, yeah, pulled-on doors.
There any windows on the doors?
Uh, I, 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 we haven't really decided on architectural details. Uh, I know we've sent in some concept drawings. Yeah, that's, that's, that, that's what we sent in.
Two different types.
And I'm assuming because there's not a variance, the materials likely match the form-based code then?
That's a criteria of the form-based code, the, um, architectural details match the, um, the design criteria. Go over the, the rest of the variances, uh, front setback, the property line greater than, uh, thirty feet. So, side setback from property line greater than twenty feet. And as you can see, based on the placement of the building, it does not meet those standards.
I'm sorry, this is going to ask kind of a stupid question, but it's driving crazy. You're considering the front Kepler Road, not three-thirty-two.
Right, that's the primary road.
Okay, so Kepler's front, this is a side.
Yeah.
I, I warned you.
No, you're fine.
Is that, is only if the subdivision is.
Right, well, we are going to subdivide this.
Yeah.
Lot when we are granted the, the variances. Our full intention is to subdivide and build it out.
Like the concept, I'm, right. But shared parking, it's encouraged in the form-based code.
Hmm.
Could you, instead of bringing the parking all the way out to the street across the whole lot too? Would you make it shallower, further away from the street? And share it with the future parking on lot one?
I'm talking about, uh, well, there, there is, uh, existing parking here. Well, we're talking with the town, we have, uh, decided to have, to abandon the existing, um, curb, yeah, curb cut and then extending it, so there's only two entrances for three lots, and then we would have shared parking, so there's access between all three parcels.
Then there is no access to three-thirty-two from this lot, from in any.
What's that? No, there's no access to three-thirty-two from the individual parcels, it's, all access is from Kepner Road.
It's a demonstration, that cloud, when there's gotten more, more easily accessed. It's two, two renderings of how the doors might be.
Right, just showing different options that they're going with.
Turn to the bottom one.
So, Logan, and I, I guess I
I thought the proposal was the glass one.
On the bottom?
Obviously, why would you try?
Right.
Why would you go?
Yeah, well, I mean, again, the form-based code. Exactly, I, I mean, I'm in favor of the bottom one, that's what I'm trying to push.
That's all, that's glass, right?
So, yeah, but I think.
The percentage?
Well, I think there should be, potentially we set a standard of what that percentage is, and then they go with it.
How do we know that? How do we know what percentage they need?
Well, that's the, so level of, so, so variance that can be granted. As you said, the, where that deviation is.
So ideally, we'd like to have a percentage of what is shown there. In terms of what percent of.
Right, and I don't have that right now, uh, since I'm still working with an architect. I'm just doing the, the site plan aspects of it.
Trying to think of, can we, well, on the other variance request without doing the transparency.
I don't know if it would matter because then they won't be able to.
Well, they would need to pay their fees before you can rule. But I think, I would grant a variance for three percent out of the seventy-five, I guess you can arbitrarily pick it.
I just don't know what it is based on those drawings.
Right.
Right now, so I can't give you a number of what we, we'd like to have. Because I mean, it, it's contingent, they, they don't want to put a mu, bunch of money into full-scale architectural drawings if they can't even build this.
Right. Well, do you want to remove that request then? I mean, how do you know you're not at seventy-five percent if you're standing there saying, I'm making these decisions on purpose?
Well, based on like our initial analysis with the combination between the existing and what we're proposing, it, it doesn't meet that standard.
So what is it? Where is it? What's the bottom?
I, I, I don't know that number.
That's, I think we're having, you can't.
I, I think that's where.
You're having trouble being specific and, and we can't.
Yeah.
We can't, uh, uh, act with it abstract.
I agree.
Uh, so we got a, we have a, an issue right there.
I mean, we could request that design similar to the bottom one there be considered, given what the exact.
I mean, I'm happy to continue this and to make sure that you get a specific number of what we're applying for and, and come back and give you that answer so that that variance is more specific. Voting on not an arbitrary number.
Right, that would be good.
Yeah, I'm, we're fine with having that happen.
Well, why don't we, can, you okay with continuing until next month?
Yes, yeah.
Can we ask him to tighten all of the numbers then? Because it says it, because the front lot's exceeding thirty percent of the property. By what? Is it thirty-two percent, fifty-eight percent? I mean, I can do some guessing here, but.
Yeah, I can give you.
So if you're asking for, we need the real number.
Certainly, I can add the real number, so when you're voting and logging it, it's it's, the records shows the actual numbers.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we'll continue until next, next month.
Alright, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, uh, another thing that I think the board would like to see is exploration of alternatives, not that you have to draw it up, but come up with, you know.
For the side or of the overall.
But why can't you build lot two closer to the street? Again, they don't want to.
I can show what it would look like if that building was placed where form-based code says it. And the different scenarios, I, I can, I can have an exhibit that shows that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Are, are you familiar with the tests, the things that we have to ask?
Yes.
You, okay, so, you know, one says whether benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to have. That's really.
Yeah, I'm happy to, uh, supply that.
You could talk about feasibility too.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, that's.
The more information, the better for us.
Yeah, certainly, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next, uh, continued public hearing is for property at four-nine-six-four Gilchrist Drive. Gregory Novak.
No, I was working on unmuting there.
There you go.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep, yes, we can.
Can't see you, but that's okay.
Uh, well, I can fix that, I think. I also would like to turn your volume up.
Can I ask you a question as chair?
Yes.
I thought this one was going to go back for planning orders, something internal was going to happen with this one.
The HOA.
Yeah, we were going to see if the HOA had to be the applicant, because it's on their property. Sarah had, uh, talked and had made the decision that, they didn't want.
Fill in that a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
So the, like some other applications, um, Mr. Novak prepared the application, property owner is the HOA. The president of the HOA did sign off on the application, so my understanding is that they're aware of the application. With our application, the applicant is not the property owner, that's the same thing required in those instances is that the property owner sign off on the application, therefore they're basically moving it in the right. So I think this kind of will work the same way, the HOA as an entity is, um, of the property.
Do we have any written sign-off from them?
Yes.
Okay, that, that we need to have.
So. This is just a real estate sign.
Yeah. Mr. Novak was trying to find the written authorization.
It's a real estate sign.
It is a real estate sign, and it's temporary.
Yeah, I know, I know, I don't know.
Well, the only thing that can be nice to solve with this is just that signs go up there all the time, there are a number of places up there which go for sale. A lot of them, they put way out near the road, so it obstructs the view.
Right.
So I think we'll get on this is that it will let, we allow them, but they have to be back a certain.
As long as it's not obstructing traffic or view or whatever.
Were the, were there any conditions with the HOA signing off in terms, do they, are, are there any conditions? Or is it just a, um, you know, uh, green light, uh, with?
No, they didn't, I don't think they signed, they weren't aware of the application was made, is what she was saying, so.
This letter just shows that Barry is president of the homeowners association.
From him or them?
Well, it's the application itself.
Yeah, he signed off on the application.
Is, is the town going to require this for every future real estate sign now as we go through?
The town is not going to require that.
This is.
And is not requiring it here.
Okay.
Is my understanding, is that accurate, Sarah?
The only reason this required a variance is because, yes, temporary real estate signs are allowed, but there is a section of town code, it doesn't allow any sign to be within a certain distance of the property boundary and where he wants to place it, I think it was fifteen feet, where he wants to place it, it's like, you know, where is it like three feet away from the property line to the south? Um, that's the only reason it would require a variance, not that he's placing a real estate sign, that's allowed. It's just that it couldn't be that close to the property line. He's allowed to place a real site, real estate sign out there because his property's not visible from the road, so they're allowed to place it, um, on the jointing person, which actually is owned by the HOA, um, along that road, because it's a private road and by the HOA.
Right.
It's just that it was too close.
Honestly, I mean, this is kind of, it was very specific and, you know, it, it, I don't see it as an issue. It's a sign that's going to be there. I mean, this is unique, it's not going to, every property, it's not like this.
So we react to complaints. If we move on this and you have no complaints, then the world's a happy place.
Any other questions, does anybody have of the applicant?
Now that we know.
Dr. Novak, do you have anything additionally you want to add?
I mean, unless someone needs clarification, um, I, no, I mean, um, there's been signs down there for twenty-seven years and someone complained, the town had to deal with it and, um. And, um, I followed the planning board's advice and how to go about dealing with it. And that's how I get here. So, um, you guys gotta do what you gotta do and, and so, um, I did it. And then when someone said, you know, the HOA had to do it, I actually said, well, then just take the work I've done and turn it over to the HOA. And the planning board came back and said, no, that's unnecessary because the HOA already signed off and that makes it okay. So I don't have anything to add other than where I specified. I, I do, I'm, I'm cognizant that you don't want to stick on way out in the road, but that was never the complaint anyhow. The, the, the problem is that that parcel was never wide enough to allow any sign down there based on the town ordinances. And as long as there is a complaint out there, there has to be a variance, I suppose, um, so that anybody can put a sign up, let alone me.
No.
Uh, any questions from the audience? Or members?
I'm good.
Mr. Novak, are you okay with us closing the public hearing?
Uh, sure. Uh, only one question is to mail me and tell me yes, no, okay, what's the next step?
Uh, we will, we have sixty two days in order to make a decision, but I think we'll make the decision tonight and it will be either yes, you have a variance or no, you don't.
Okay.
I'll contact and go if not, or like if it's not on.
Yeah, and you want to call it, if you don't want to hang on until the end of the meeting, you could certainly call tomorrow and talk tonight.
Okay, I mean, that's, I, I can, I can, I'm out of town, but I can, I can do that. Um, is there any reason for me to provide more information? Do you have everything you need?
Oh, because once we close the public hearing, we can't take any new information.
No, we're good.
No.
Is there any, anyone on the board who needs better explanation of the request or understanding of the pictures or anything like that?
No, I think we're good.
If, if you're good, then I'm good.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing then. And as I said, we have sixty two days to make a decision, but we'll likely make it tonight.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Good, thank you.
See you guys.
Okay, the next, this is the first, this is continued public hearing as well. Uh, Michael Schwabell, uh, representing Tom Crumlish, Notre Dame Retreat House, five one five one Foster Road. Uh, seeking variance for a sign. I guess Mr. Crumlish looked like you're there.
Yep, Mike couldn't make it. He stuck me with this.
Okay, if you would present to us what you're requesting and we can.
Yeah, there's, basically, there's two signs that have been in existence for twenty five, thirty years that are pretty rundown and beat. One is out by the road that just, uh, has the Notre Dame Retreat House name on it, and the other one is right up by the front door. And we're basically replacing two old dilapidated signs with essentially the same thing new. And I guess the original signs, when they put up, there was no ordinance for a sign or maybe nobody got one. So therefore, when we want to go replace these, we found out that, uh, it needs a variance just because it's a sign. But it's basically the same size dimensions and other than it's gonna look new and nice as opposed to old and junky. Correct.
Questions that anybody on the committee has? Board.
Are they, are they any larger or they're just, they're about the same?
No, they're basically same size.
Same size, okay.
Yeah. And one of the, the three houses. Some one of the ones.
Yeah, that's the one up by the building that would look like that one. Yep.
You can't even see the one that's up.
No, it's, 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 it's way up over the hill up by the building, yes. But because it's a sign, the ordinance applies, I guess.
Maybe down there.
The only question I would have, the lighting on the sign down by the road?
Uh, it's the same lighting that's been there. We didn't, we wouldn't move the lighting. Yeah, the lighting, the lighting's connected underground. It would be, it, I, probably it'd be nice to move it, but it's, it'd be a real pain to move. Cause it's on underground conduit and stuff, but, but the lighting's in the same place, no difference.
It, is it upgraded lighting? We have to go to Ellie.
The light. Uh, no, the lighting, the, the, the current plan is not to change the light. We may at some point, but right now, uh, we didn't have any plans to change the lighting, no. Lighting's been there, it's been working fine. Uh, we'll probably, maybe, you know, we're gonna probably do a lot of LED upgrading, but, uh, that's not part of this plan right now.
Not sure the lighting would be dark sky compliant.
It's kind of shine, it doesn't really shine on anything, nobody, I drive by it all the time.
Yeah, coming down the road.
Yeah. It's muted, yeah. It's not too bad.
I'm just saying, if, if it's upgraded, LED's pretty bright. Boy, you wouldn't understand, so.
Yeah, the LEDs might be brighter, right, correct.
Yeah, I think if it was upgraded, you probably would have to have some sort of, um.
Or like, yeah.
I don't want to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right now, we're on a pretty tight budget trying to take this place over, so it's, um, it's basically, you know, just replace the sign is, is all the intent is.
Any other questions from the board?
Hmm, no.
From the audience? Are you comfortable with our closing of public hearing?
Uh, yes, I, like you said, to us, it's pretty straightforward. It's replacing light kind with something new, so I would hope that we would hope it would be pretty straightforward, but, uh, that's up to you guys.
Board, are you comfortable closing?
Yeah.
Close the public hearing. We have sixty two days to make a decision. Hopefully try to make it tonight.
Okay, um, is, is that posted on, is that posted on cloud permit or should we call the office in the morning?
I can put it on cloud for you tomorrow. The decision sheet will be up there, but I'll contact you myself.
Okay, alright. Yeah, if you can contact Mike, that would be fine. Yeah, he just couldn't make it tonight. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, new public hearing. Um, let's see, Brandon Stryker, owner of property at three seven oh five Timberline Drive. After proposing insulation of pre-built eight by twelve shed, seven feet from the rear property line with fifteen feet required, so eight feet variance, eight foot variance is being requested. Mr. Stryker here tonight. Out online.
Let's skip the next one.
Thank you. My probably should be here for the night.
Mm-hmm.
So, for now, we'll skip over it and we'll go on to the next one. Next one is Adrian Ashdown, four four six four County Road sixteen. Supposed insulation of a sixteen by thirty two foot in-ground pool with sixty, six hundred sixty five feet of disturbance. Four foot tall fence, seeking relief from, uh, town law requiring, uh, or do not allowing, uh, swimming pools to be in a front yard. Mr. Ashdown. Yeah, okay, you want to come up and?
Yes, we're seeking a, a variance to allow us to have a, a pool, um. Uh, a fence and a garden shed in what was, is considered the, um, uh, front yard, which we, in our. Now, if you thought it would, would as the backyard.
The house actually faces. North.
The, the front entrance faces the, uh, the, the west and, and, um, the, the back part of the house faces the east, which would be, uh, control sixteen.
It's kind of confused that, cause the garage is in the background.
The carriage is part of, part of the house.
Yes. But it's. The elevated deck that comes out from the house.
Yes, that overlooks the, the, uh, control of sixteen.
Right. Again, I was confused looking at this, the way it's oriented, I was confused, um, and. Pool level be where in terrace and that's that.
That would be between the, uh, the deck and the road.
It'll be towards the road from the deck.
Yes, the pool's actually been built. Cause I, when you did it, uh, we just submitted all the paperwork and a cloud permit and we actually got the building permit. Uh, which was rescinded after the, the pool was actually been built.
Is the pool's completed or?
Yes. Just there. Can you just point out the deck?
Absolutely.
You pointed out on the map.
Yes.
Deck one, for sure. I was up there yesterday and, I'm assuming I didn't see the pool.
Sorry.
I was up there yesterday and today, I must admit, I did not see the pool.
Well, we didn't, oh.
No.
Did you get the right address?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm wondering. No, I never checked it.
It's got a great.
There was a sign in the yard.
It's got a very big blue cover on it for the.
My keyhole is on property of the one floor.
Yeah, it's right here. They haven't updated this as quite for the one, so.
Oh, so the house isn't even there. Okay.
I think Google Maps is updated.
But it's the first house on your left, but you've got that driveway.
No, it's, no, you have to go around. That's, that's lot one, we're lot four, so you have to take a right.
There you go. That's why I didn't see it.
That's why it's always. Really, there's woods to, uh. To go roadside.
Yeah.
See it from space.
Now, that's interesting, because it go, I looked at Google Maps on Saturday and our house was actually on it.
Like, might zoom out a little bit? Say, your pool.
No, it's not, that, that house isn't that, it's not that, not.
Yeah, that's not your pool.
No, that's, that's a neighbor's house.
Where does your driveway, looks like your driveway connects to a shared access.
No, the, the driveway's not even on, um.
Yes.
Where does it come out?
Comes out and.
Oh, it comes down.
Right, so, so you're gonna round the curve.
Yeah.
Past that house.
Yes.
On Kinners.
Yes.
There's a stop where quarter up that too, brush door. That's it.
I'm literally right in the same spot.
But so there, there's brush and, and woods on the lake side.
Yes.
Okay.
You can see the fence from the wall, from the road. We can't see the pool. That's, we're not overlooked and we don't overlook anybody else.
And where's the shed location?
Um. Um, that's now, that's been pulled back, it's now flush or we have.
Okay.
So that's not in the, in the front yard anymore.
The other people get up there and say.
How does the pool look though to the front instead of the rear?
There's no room at the, at the front, uh, or, uh, the, uh, other side of the house. There, there is a large area to one side, but that's where the leach field is, the sewage system. The leach field is an apartment and the other.
And the geograph, yeah. It's in my local rules.
The other thing is that it's, the only reason it's the front of the house. The only reason it's the front of the house is because the mailbox is, is down on West Lane Road. So when you come up. The private road comes up and it's an L and then you turn right and you're in the garage. More where you pull on the others, which on any normal house would be the backyard.
Well, the front is the west side of the road, so.
Right, but your garage, your, the front, the front doors. In this case, on the back of Alex.
Could you give your name, just?
I'm Bill Timerson, landscape designer.
Okay.
Uh, I actually have some pictures. Will they be any?
Yeah.
Yeah, would be, yeah. Yes, right.
And you're, like, your house is tipped too, right? It's like turned, how, like, when you said it rose up and around. It's kind of like.
Your driveway comes in.
So the road that they were talking about that for access would be. So the road that they were talking about that for access with the road. So the, the County Road 16th are accessible. So your front door would be the other side.
The, my house was actually there facing, I guess, like the face of a hill. It's just weird.
Mike, is the access road on the site line? Or site drawing?
On the original plan, it was by gravel driveway.
Yeah, on this here.
As utilities.
I think the very first one.
It's the driver comes.
Do we have any other pools on County Road 16 that are in the front?
Well, I guess our neighbor technically does.
Well, that's all we're looking at is technically.
Yeah.
It's the orientation of the house.
It's the orientation and also the topography too, so, I mean, it's kind of, it's on a hill, so. Great limits where they could put the pool. Yeah, right there, that's 4480. That's technically on the front, isn't it?
That's that one.
Sort of?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of in the front. Right?
Because that's the driveway you share with them, right? But it's the access road.
Yeah, the access road. Now, he, yeah, you have a separate driveway or that's the same driveway right there?
No, it's just another private driveway that.
Okay, where, where does yours come in, like, from that?
I was actually.
So it's a total, okay, kind of same. I don't know, that looks to me as if it's the front yard.
We have precedents.
Yes.
And I don't think we, we weren't the ones that did it, right?
That's a good question.
Any other questions?
I would just say with our, our tests, you know. Whether benefit can be achieved by other means. So you mentioned in passing, you know, why the other sides of the house, could you say that again? We're not a. Once, there's a south end, there's no room. The west end, there's no, no room. The north end, it's where the leach field is for the septic system.
When you say no room, you mean because of the topography?
Well, yes, it's just in terms of the area.
We don't have any complaints from neighbors on this one?
Yeah, we have any letters, did you get any, like, any of your neighbors?
Gates of burning letters.
Yeah.
All this big shit with me.
No, I know, and you can just go to your neighbor at 4480 and. Certainly would, if you were to see what you.
Anyone in the audience have any questions? Anything else you would like to present?
No, let's.
Record comfortable closing?
Yes.
We'll close the public hearing, you have 62 days to make a decision, but. Stay around for deliberation.
Okay, but it'll come through on PowerPoint, will it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, tomorrow I'll contact you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next new public hearing is Karen and David Vandermein, Vander Eadens. Property of 6245 Cobb Road. Posing a toilet in an accessory structure seeking relief from. Town code 220-96, accessory building shall not be used as habitable space.
Um, yeah, so we have an accessory building on our property, I would like to use the upstairs as a home office. My husband and I both work remote. Our house is small. Bedroom house. I'm not intending to use this space for any other purpose, I'm not intending to live in it, I'm not intending to rent it. It would solely be for office space. I've been requesting a variance to have a toilet put in. The space because it is a distance from the house and with winter and snow and conference calls, it's difficult to run back and forth. Um, I have reached out to our surrounding neighbors and none of them have an issue and you could probably pull it up if you need to see. The messages from everyone. Our house and the accessory building is, they're about 1,000 feet from the road, around about nine acres. So not visible to, you know, anybody. Our septic system is compatible to add another line. The original permit for the accessory building did include electric, water and gas, those are already there.
Should we be a sink with this?
Um, if it's, if you would allow it, I would love a sink.
Is there a sink now, they're plumbing?
There's no sink now, no.
It's just a stuffed off.
Um, in the, in the downstairs area, there's like a water that you can turn on and off, yeah. But I, yeah, first thing I'd have to add, buttering upstairs, yes.
Would you be okay with the condition that said no. Said you work from home, do you see customers or clients or anything like that? You'd be okay with the condition that said no business conducted? Customers or clients coming?
Hundred percent, yeah.
And no rental?
No rental. We can say personal use only, right?
Personal.
Personal.
Yeah.
Remote business use only.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that building's a little bit bigger than your house, isn't it? About the same.
So you would ask me that question?
Well, I was just driving in and looking into it.
Bigger, but. Maybe it's just the roof liner, the porch liner or something.
Sort of look from the driveway, yeah. Yeah, actually, you don't see some of the other part of that house coming out. Question?
I think this comes up to, reminds us that when a variance is granted, it's on the property and not on the individual. So we will have to, you know, include that other wording that in the future will be used for a purpose other than what you stated.
In history of anything. That's been allowed in accessory structure before.
I know, we're pretty strict about those things.
Some of the steep cliffs along the lake, we allow lavatories and. And have, have allowed.
I can't remember, not.
Not allowing.
Yeah, not, we're all.
I don't remember giving them.
Well, I know they're around, I know, especially if they're down.
We have one of his grandfather.
Yeah, but the ones you've denied are lake ones where people are looking to add six bedrooms and a kitchen to their.
Yeah.
Yeah, much different territories, but we can have that wording in there though.
Actually, just, and we should put that wording in, but. Plan, actually, the Grove's plan says the existing storage building shall never be used as dwelling or additional sleeping space. Without town of Canada Day approval is an appropriate upgrades and enlargements of the septic system.
Okay.
It should at least be made a condition, conditions.
I'm good, yes, I'm good.
Are you satisfied with what you presented? Go ahead and close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Close the public hearing, we have 62 days to make a decision, but we'll get to it tonight. Hey, let's see. Now we go on to number one.
Originally.
County Road. County Road 10. This is for pre-pu apartments. Multiple requests here, but we've seen it before.
My, good evening, Paul Clucci with DeMarco Group here tonight, on behalf of applicant CGACR 10. For Phase Two Pre-Pu Apartments, William Hart, joining me tonight is Greg Förster, also with DeMarco Group. Oversees our affordable housing division and Mike Voloschowski from BME's project engineer. So as Mr. Chairman mentioned, we've seen this before, actually this board in April of 2020 approved. The same variances we're asking for. We did not get funded in that round, we are back in funding for funding on the latest round. We have a high degree of confidence that we'll get funded this go around, we have support at the state level. Local level, town of Kambegwa and county level. The variances are the same as previous with the exception we removed three buildings. So originally Phase Two was 96 units, 12 buildings. Based on HGR guidelines and input from them, they said the sweet spot for a number of units is slightly smaller. For a number of reasons that if you care, I can go into. But basically, we're seeking variances for setbacks from the building edge to internal parking and roadways. The buildings that are applicable here are. Numbered, it'd probably be a little tough to see, but building number 15, 17, 18, 19, 20 and 21 have the exact same variance. This is the same layout that you saw in April of 20. Three buildings that we removed, we are proposing that that would be greenscape, green space. So we're not doing anything to increase in previous area, we're not modifying the layout. This was consistent with the preliminary overall, the reason that these setback variances came up was this round. We're going for net zero building, so we're doing geothermal and solar. And the orientation of the buildings was necessary for the maximum solar gain. So when we rotated the buildings, to keep the alignment of the internal roadways where infrastructure is and was planned. We just have these setbacks to internal parking and roadways.
Need the same setbacks or is correct? Questions?
I think you guys were on.
So it's, it looks familiar.
Yeah. And in a way, I mean, they're asking for less than how they did before. They removed three buildings.
Yeah.
And the setbacks also would be consistent with the setbacks of the other buildings that are there already.
So we've basically already approved this one time and now you're just, because of the time.
It was conditioned on the site plan as proposed, we modified the site plan by removing three buildings and there was a sunset on that approval of. Building permits to paint within one year.
Right.
Sorry, I remember, I remember to put that under that.
Yeah, right, I know, at that time you did. We weren't as consistent.
Any questions or comments? Audience, such a very large audience.
We're not very entertaining, are we?
Are you comfortable with closing the public hearing?
I am, Mr. Chairman.
Board, comfortable? If we close the public hearing, we have about 62 days to make a decision, but. But it's nice.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You want to recall that one?
Fantastic. If you want.
Sorry.
Thank you.
We'll go into our business session now. Why don't we discuss Cobb Road first since you stayed here and you're the only one staying. Okay, Cobb Road, the request for a lavatory and accessory structure.
I don't have any issue with it as long as it's personal use only, yeah.
I think it would have to be conditions or like.
Yeah.
I mean.
You meant to home office.
Talked about it before, some other things which were, you know, in terms of more along the lake, whether they want to put it in. And then now would be a level structure is certainly is back in the woods.
Yeah, she's got plenty of room.
Pinging on people. I don't have any problem with it as long as you're conditioning.
Kind of reminds me when earlier we were talking good faith, based on the presentation, I sense good faith. So, but we'll put it in writing, you know, now in case there's ever a transfer of ownership.
Right, absolutely. Well, and like Chris said, it was already on there anyway.
We're going to see more of these, this is going to be a big deal, it's home offices. And not just home offices, but I mean, as long as people like Bob keep getting old. And I'm trying not to. I'm trying, no, but I need it there.
Yeah, you're right.
In-law houses, it's going to be a deal, yeah.
Get one of those granny class throughout the year, call your parents now.
That's right, this time. One time, one time.
Chris, then we could have people building, building big trellises across.
Yeah, there you go, zip line, zip line.
Okay. You know, I think it doesn't look like they can achieve it without any, in any other means.
Yeah.
Won't change the character of the neighborhood, really not a substantial request.
Is there any water there?
We have no adverse physical or environmental effects. Water's already there, septic is.
They're just tying in the plumbing inside and remodel, right? Yeah. I'm good with voting on it.
Okay, this is for Erin and David Randi, who has our 6245 Cobb Road. Posing a toilet and accessory structure and seeking relief from 220-96. That accessory building shall not be used as habitable space. Child relief from 220-96 be granted. Shannon Shewie.
Yes.
Bob Millier.
Yes.
David Emery.
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy.
Yes.
Chip Sale.
Yes. Okay. Based on the information presented tonight. Site plan as well.
Yeah, wasn't really.
The. Benefit outweighs the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment of the neighborhood. Cannot be achieved by other means. Undesirable change will result in the neighborhood. Not a substantial request, have any physical or environmental effect. Self-created, but that's not determined. Conditions, I would think, would be that this will be used for home office purposes only.
Yeah.
Personally.
Personally, yeah, I like that.
Personally, yeah. Yeah, personally, yeah.
I think that's fine.
Yeah.
And then. One year and then.
Yes.
Specific to the plans as.
Yeah, I guess they need a building permit.
Not really, I think, but they.
Of course it would, yeah.
They would for running one upstairs?
Like, I don't know.
They already have septic, right?
Which are connected.
Yeah, but they probably.
Got it, got it.
A lawyer had to sign that.
Yeah.
It'd be accomplished within a year. Also, do you want to add to that? Okay, I'll set that.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't want to stay for the rest of them?
So entertaining.
To see how we beat those guys.
Well, I guess, let's see, we're. Captain Road, we're going to next one.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, Hill Crest Drive.
I have no issue with the sign, so.
It's, uh, it's almost embarrassing that we went, had to go to this detail, but this all originates from one complaint, is that, is that what this was all about?
If I accuse myself, can Jason vote?
Sure. Why? Do you have an issue with some?
I'm embarrassed about this.
Or you can't pass. Say no, say no.
No, it's not.
Yeah, 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 get it.
Yeah, I'm gonna make you make the most of it.
I'm gonna vote for Dave.
Alright, shall we call it? Please.
Uh, Greg, Novak, four nine six four, Hill Crest Drive. Advocate seeks to place real estate signs such that a twelve-foot setback variance is required. This three-foot is proposed and fifteen foot is required. Shall the three-foot variance be granted? Shannon Chauvin.
Yes.
Bob Millier.
Yes.
David Emery.
Yes.
Kelly La Boy.
Yes.
Chip Salem.
Yes.
You guys know that she can't capture tone in that.
Yes.
No, it's a little.
It's not you or name anymore. Wow, can I put on there?
Uh.
Okay, benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood, um.
I'm not sure we really need a lot of reasoning.
Yeah.
You know what? It's in.
I would want to be sure that's in there, I, I, I would say. The narrow, narrow nature of the property at that point. Necessitates that a grant, uh, variance be granted and but I also would put that any sign placed must be.
Adhere to that.
Far enough from Wesley Road that it is not obscure. In traffic.
Do we need to put in, in the wording that the, uh, it's HOA property and they signed off?
Probably.
Yeah.
HOA signed off on.
It's HOA's problem now.
I was just adding, you were saying visibility for drivers' vehicles.
Yeah.
And we'll put that.
Yeah.
Alright, we're moving right on.
I know. approved.
Okay.
We're just gonna skip. Other signs? Anybody have any issues?
Sign that's the Notre Dame.
Alright.
All the questions, please.
Tom Promlish, uh, Notre Dame Retreat House, sixty-one, sixty-one Foster Road. No, okay. Shall the one foot ten inch variance be granted for the ground sign, that's the first one. Second is shall the twenty-seven point eight three square foot variance be granted for the ground sign? And the third one is shall the variance of one foot be granted for replacement sign? Shannon Chauvin.
Yes.
Bob Millier.
Yes.
David Emery.
Yes.
Kelly La Boy.
Yes.
Chip Salem.
Yes.
I got something on this and, and Dave got me thinking about the brightness.
Yeah.
It's okay what we're approving, but if they switch to a different kind of lighting. That, you know, I, I don't know in that neighborhood that would make a difference, but it, it would.
I, I, again, I, when I come down Foster Road at night, that's pretty bright, the, the one light.
Yeah. And if there's an issue, I'm sure somebody's gonna say something to him and I'm sure they will comply.
If they change the lighting, they will have to come through.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm, if it's inappropriate, not complying with the code.
Good, okay, it's, it's covered then.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, you can put on there that really literally they're just replacing the left here signs, that's kind of it, right? Nothing else is changing.
Minimal change in size.
They're really, yeah. He said it was no different.
There is no change in size.
Yeah, he said it was no different whatsoever. It's basically replacement. Of an already existing, pre-existing one.
As presented to the.
Probably don't need the word, they've already done.
Did they do it already? I thought I saw the signs up.
Is that?
Yeah, that was done.
We don't need the one-year thing, it's already done.
I saw when I went by, I was like, oh, they put new signs up.
One year ago.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Alright.
Stryker.
Stryker goes to next one.
Reminds me of the airplane movie.
Okay, cool. I'm sorry on this one, I, I don't, I went up there, I went up there twice, I still didn't get to the right house. Oh, because they.
He's like, what pool?
The, the common driveway comes down to Westlake Road, the sign was right at the corner.
Yeah.
And you go up. There's a house which is really at a funny angle, I thought that was the one that was being requested.
They're all kind of like that.
On the garage door, there was a stop order.
Oh, really?
Anyway.
That's funny.
You know, this one with all the back and forth, once you, uh, got the Google overhead with a neighbor having the same exact thing, that was a slam, became a slam dunk.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if the neighbor has, uh.
Yeah, cause that was, I'm okay with it if somebody else.
And there, there is woods between here and.
You can't see anything out there, honestly, you really have to be looking up here, so.
You know, I proved the wrong house.
I know, right? See, look, it was so hard to find, you couldn't even find.
I'm gonna go up and see his house tomorrow.
Check it out, yeah, okay, now I don't have to look at it.
I'm not saying it shouldn't be approved, but I think a professional architect should know which side is front.
Well, that was part of the problem I was having with the site plans that we were given. Westlake Road wasn't always on, wasn't on active.
Right.
Usually the lower inset, which.
It does kind of look like they're on Westlake, I mean, the way you pull in like that, it's kind of weird, but.
I mean, if we say no, what could happen?
Dig it up. Then we go over to the neighbor too then.
Alright.
Adrian Ashdown, at four four six four County Road sixteen, seeking relief from two twenty dash nine W two A. That does not allow for swimming pools in the front yard, shall the relief from this be granted? Shannon Chauvin.
Yes.
Bob Millier.
Yes.
David Emery.
Yes.
Kelly La Boy.
Yes.
Chip Salem.
Yes.
Most of the property doesn't want to do it.
Yeah, the, uh, benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood, uh, based on, uh.
It's a very unique positioning, yeah. I was gonna try to throw one there, it's a very unique positioning of the house and driveway in relation to the road coverage.
And the site and the, that area of the yard is the only, except the only adequate place to put it because of. Dimensions of the side and backyard.
The lot and the topography and everything else.
Certainly fits within the character of the neighborhood.
Obviously, yeah.
Absolutely.
And you can't see it from around, you know, it's not visible.
Shielded from the road.
And then it's already built, so we know what will be taking.
No, we don't, I can get there.
Yeah, I know, it looks like from a visual perspective there. Sort of.
Uh, within a year, well, within the past year.
Yeah.
Uh, the environmental people have, they just said some recommendations about the landscaping.
Yes.
But it wasn't any significant.
Well, it is pretty steep in that area and, and there's a lot of runoff.
Planning boards still.
Yeah, right, yeah.
They have to go to site plan still.
Yeah.
Alright.
Even though it's done?
Not to, to bring them into compliance.
How many agrees it permits?
Yeah, now we have to go to the, yeah.
Thank you, I, I, I kind of want, I, I, can we? Discuss that, I, I, I didn't like your question, but I had the same thought. How did, how did this last one come up? I mean, they were granted, they were given a permit and they were told, go ahead. And they did.
Right.
How did they get told to stop?
Their money didn't come through.
They didn't, so what happened was there's phases of it.
Yeah.
And so the.
Wait, 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 we're talking, what are we talking about now?
Crete.
I'm talking about the pool, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, they're.
We're both on the other side, okay.
Yeah, the, the pool's given the permit.
Yep.
Uh, once they start the work. Was that?
This, how long ago is this?
Uh, this was.
Like April, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was around March or April, uh, they got right to it, started doing the work at that point. Um, Mike Murphy had just started working, he looked at it. He discussed it with Doug, Doug said, why was this ever given? And then we all sat down and went over it and. No one could figure out how it happened, but it happened, so he said, okay, we have to stop this. Mike Murphy looked at it, investigated it, said, you know, they told them, you have to go in for variance and that's what they did, so. It was just a miscommunication somewhere online, someone worked it out and said, oh, okay, it's fine.
Ah.
There's been a number of miscommunications back in that period of time from January through March.
Lot of transitions.
Where, where you got, yeah, a lot of transition in the office and a lot of things got mixed up, so.
Look how well you cut out, you're, you're, you're doing such great job.
Well, also, the site plan. Doesn't have Westlake Road up.
It's.
Yeah.
Which is, yeah, I mean, you would never even know it was a Westlake Road house, you would think it was like an offshoot, like a Misty Hill or something else, right?
At the front of the house. It's not.
It's not even facing.
Okay.
So does this happen often?
No.
Yes. The way they're built, or you mean just people putting pools in?
The.
Stop orders. A mistake with something getting permitted and then. So far, we've had it twice.
Has it happened twice?
Other one on Westlake Road. Just.
I didn't realize it was twice.
It was the, the shed over on the lake.
Where they expanded the shed.
Shannon, you might see a few more of these, but generally, no, it doesn't happen.
We, we didn't, we didn't have those a lot of times before, but everybody had done here.
And that's fine, I mean.
Well, and like you said there, I mean, you guys, you guys really did have a lot of transition.
Okay, let's go on to Creek View.
Creek View. Any questions here?
I'm ready.
He basically said what, what we approved in the past, so continue it over.
Why would we say no now?
They weren't fully funded or something, there was a change, but basically what we approved before is what we're being asked to approve, pretty close.
With minus three buildings.
Setbacks to the same ones that are in phase one, where it's been built before.
They're actually adding green spaces time.
So I.
So all the arguments I used in the past, I'll, I'll use them, whatever they were.
Okay.
Alright, we just say ditto.
The reason stated and he gave us the date.
Can we say ditto, minus three and within a year?
Okay, so for the three two apartments at Woodland Park Development at County Road ten. There's the six previous variances, do you want me to?
Should the requested variance be granted?
Know what I are, I think.
Uh, shall the variance request be granted? Shannon Chauvin.
Yes.
Bob Millier.
Yes.
David Emery.
Yes.
Kelly La Boy.
Yes.
Chip Salem.
Yes. Benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood. Um. As presented on the plans. Night. They really, variances requested are similar to what have already been granted.
They're exact.
For other phases, um.
We, yeah.
Keeping with the neighborhood.
It's the same project they had before, but they didn't get funding for that we have approved, so.
I don't know what we need to say, took in some of the basement of the buildings, which I didn't realize was because of they're doing some geothermal.
Right.
Yeah.
And solar.
I didn't know that.
Which is probably worthwhile putting in because.
Yeah.
I actually did a tour of that when they did the first phase, it was pretty neat, it's all one enclosed. You know, the airflow, they actually have trouble, the airflow is all enclosed and geothermal.
Anything else anybody want to put in there? Has to be done within a year.
Yeah.
And contingent on the, contingent on the plans plan.
Alright.
Nice, wonderful.
Um, new business. New referrals from town, town manager, any requests for rehearing? The protocol or the procedures we use were, were distributed and. She said nothing was done last year, I think that was incorrect. And I tried to find, cause we talked about it in January, I found January minutes or in under the town. Couldn't find February minutes at all, we talked about it in January and we talked about having to include Zoom.
Right, yeah.
Protocol. And we also. There was a note about, you know, could you have a quorum with somebody being.
On Zoom.
Right.
Right.
The answer to that is yes, you can, well.
We changed that, I think, right, right, we changed that right after COVID, we've updated that rule.
But in our January minutes, it said, uh. You could have a quorum remote, but you had to vote in person.
Yeah, but that was what we changed, though, we changed that somewhere.
And I, I assumed it, we went over it in February, but I cannot find.
Right there, wait, 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 right here, we have twenty twenty-three adopted rules of procedure.
Right, see, she said, when she sent it out, that the last one was this one.
Yeah, the twenty nineteen, you're right, she's wrong.
I resented that.
January twenty-fifth, need to add Zoom protocol, Bureau of Language used by the ECB and Planning Board. Remote board members can vote, but a quorum is needed in person. That's true. Page two.
Now, is that, is that?
Unconsistent.
Yeah. So long as three of you are in the room.
Okay.
Two can be online and voting.
Okay.
So.
So three of us are in the room and we have something that the county board is.
You're fine.
We're still fine.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, what about when the, even when the super majority is where?
Yeah. Even when you need a super majority, that's fine.
Alright.
Um, things have changed, I mean, that used to be the whole thing, you couldn't participate.
Oh, I know, right?
Uh, now, they realized, um, there's software now that really makes it feasible.
Oh, yeah.
In every.
I actually had a drive my daughter's car here today and I always thought about doing remote. Just because I have drive my daughter's car.
But you guys asked us.
The question, where, where are all our other minutes? Yeah, I just have them in January twenty-three. Mike, do you have any?
Which, we had the issue with, uh, that, um, secretary came in.
Right.
For a very short time, she quit, she never finished those minutes.
I did those March minutes, I was asked to do March, so I had.
Right.
Yeah, but I couldn't find March minutes.
Okay.
They're done.
Well, yeah, you've done a bunch of meeting minutes, where are they?
We did give.
Done some zoning board meeting minutes, right?
Oh, yeah, I mean, there should, but I couldn't find any after January.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
So Sean sent an email out saying, here's the adopted from the previous meeting. That you, that you chip signed and it's, uh, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three's.
So those minutes were somewhere?
I, this isn't minutes, this is the adopted procedure, so you're trying to find the monthly minutes.
Yeah, I was trying to find the monthly minutes.
Yeah, so Corinne, you've, have you done any, have you finished any zoning board minutes?
Yeah, I, yeah, they're always finished, I finished for May.
Okay. Where do you then, where do they go when you finish them?
I don't post them, Kim posts them, my sister Kim.
I don't post them, Kim posts them, my sister Kim.
Can you ask Kim?
From what I understand.
Okay.
So they're not there, well, oh, you know what? Hang on.
Are they on the, just the website?
She's really good about putting everything up.
Yeah, she's, that's weird.
They're probably just posted on the general website, right?
No, that's where I couldn't find them, that, that are only January.
Oh. Mike, do you know anything about these?
No, we've been trying to check it out.
This is an issue that's already happened?
Yes, it said, uh, we were discussing this the other day, like, there's still videos from different meetings that are not online, and we're trying to get everything on there.
Okay.
So there's definitely only one, yeah. Hey, why don't you go to zoning board?
There's only one for two thousand point three.
Wow, really?
I feel like you guys had more meetings than just one.
No, I, I don't recall.
I mean, I send those to the town parks, and they get those too, cuz they, I'm supposed to, so a lot of people have gotten these, each minute.
They post them at every application.
I, I have them, I can, I can pull them up with my email.
I was asking rhetorically, because I, I mean, I
And we have
Two are distributed.
I, I didn't pull them up from my emails, I have all the emails, I always keep them, if you want me to.
And I, I send them to the same channels. They get the approved minutes, they get the, they get the approved and the dry.
Anyway, Mike, could you have been trying to get those, um, available for public
Absolutely.
consumption?
Well, if you need any, let me know, cuz I have them all, I usually save them. Yeah, right.
I mean, we can live without the ones, if there's a couple missing from a past secretary, we can live without them, but the ones that we know are done, they're just gone, it's
No, they have to be somewhere in here, because I know they get, like I said, they get posted to the applications, to the applicants to review it all.
And they've, I need that we have approved have been distributed to us.
Yes.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we have them.
Yeah, I mean, we know they're there.
And I know I've got copies of every single board meeting, putting it in a file on my own, so.
Alright.
Okay.
So to your point, Chip, we do have newer, so we're gonna contact Sarah and say we have a newer
Mike's got it.
Yeah, well, your mic, yeah, yeah. Let's turn now that we have, uh, from last January.
Right.
This January, we did review them.
We did, yeah.
I didn't see, looking over, I didn't see any new changes I would make. We have to do that next month, I think. Um, how about approval of the minutes of November twenty-first as distributed? If I found.
Wait, were those emailed though?
Yeah, I thought so. I thought so.
I don't remember giving it.
Um, maybe I'm wrong. Yeah, November twenty-eighth, right? Yeah, draft minutes of the number of November twenty-first meeting. Dave said, looks fine.
They looked to me.
You said, look fine, me too. There you go. Yeah.
Is there a motion, please?
Oh, wait, I think you've got a motion.
I know, I, no.
Emery said, yes. I motion.
Second, all in favor?
I'll take that.
Alright, okay.
Take it.
What's our question next month?
So far, not too bad.
So you say.
We have caught up.
I appreciate people doing their stories. I guess next month we have to decide if somebody wants to be chairman.
Guess what?
I'm your chair.
Nah, I think I'm done, aren't I? Ends, like, like in a week. My term ends this year, I think, right?
You gonna run again?
Do I have to run, I have to run?
No, you don't have to run.
I appreciate, I was like, if I have to do anything more. I don't know, do you, do you guys need new blood, I mean?
We want the old blood.
We want the old blood.
The old is better, the old is better. I got something to say, but I don't wanna, I have something to say, so, you know, Dave just kinda reminded me. When you think about this glass, the glass doors on the bays, that's kind of absurd. As I look at it, because it gets dirty faster, glass, it's gonna be more, uh, overhead and maintenance.
It's gonna cook those people inside.
Besides, besides everything else, I mean, I get the thing about storefronts and the glass, okay, I, but they, but to, to put that on garage doors,
Yeah.
that's not really what
On a service station.
I, you know, I I, I really admire, and the people, they're, they're living the dream, they have this ideal, but put it into practice, some of this stuff, it, it doesn't digest well, when you think about it.
Yeah, that's true.
And if it's anything like my house, it'll be a thousand degrees in it.
They'll just open the door.
I mean, glass always gets dirty.
That shows.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I was gonna ask you, will that work?
Yeah, Dave's the one that's, it's true that.
It was seventy-five in my house the other day, when the heat was set at like sixteen.
Is if there, if you're I, I keep going back to what's in the slides, and if you haven't looked through them, look through them. It says if they're doing anything significant, I, I think we're supposed to push back and say conform.
I understand the transparency, I, I understand the, the concept, but what I'm saying in practice is, if, in a place where they're, they're, everyone's getting dirty with grease and stuff, and they're doing cars, I mean, is that really, uh, i- is that practical, I, I guess?
But is the intent of the form-based code that you want that
A uniform look.
on your ministry?
I understand what you're saying, we gotta be careful that we're not bureaucratic, sometimes like the state of New York, where
Correct.
they're telling people in all, everywhere, how they should run their lives when it's not always practical. And I, and I, I, I like the concept. And actually, the, the guy was getting in concept more than numbers, you, you were trying to put them, you know, there, we need numbers, so we can do stuff, so all of us are new to this and going back and forth, and
Can we, done? We close the meeting?
Are we done?
Are we done?
I motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
And the last one is
Aye.
Alright, we're done.
What a night, we had